Guys, we're going to go ahead and get started.
I've got to plug your thing accidentally.
A couple of things on the agenda, so we're going to start early. And so the first thing on here is the Eagle Reef presentation. We're going to start with Historic Preservation first, which is item two on the work session agenda. Mayor Chris, how do we want to, we want to let, I know Historic Preservation gave us a presentation. We want to start with that and let them go through that?
Yes.
All right, so want to come up? Yeah, please.
I think they're finding it. So, thank you. My name is Mara Hunter, and I live at 356 Equity Street here in Fairhope. And I really appreciate y'all's time today. This is the second time that we've talked about this recently. And I would like to thank the committee also, who has volunteered so many hours of their life to go over these documents. And I also want to thank Chris Williams for his work. And in my slide presentation, I attempted to draw some parallels between his version and our version. And I just want to be clear, I'm not, don't want to misrepresent his goals or anything like that, so I look forward to what he has to say, too. So, and I can just push that? Okay. So, the first, the presentation has two parts. One is just a general overview of what we're trying to accomplish and how we got there. And the second is an appendix that draws some parallels. So, the recommendation is to adopt an ordinance that creates a commission tailored to Fairhope's unique identity. We've talked in the past about how it's not a one-size-fits-all type, and so we really worked on what we thought we understood, people from Fairhope saying they wanted and didn't want, as well as what would fit within what we understood, Fairhope's budgets and resources and things like that. So, of course, we were guessing at that part because we don't have the books. So, and the words I would like to use are common sense and pragmatic in terms of how do we get at preservation. So, why Fairhope needs an Historic Preservation Commission, and we've been talking about this for a long time, to stem the rapid depletion of historic building stock and resources. And I think one of our surveys that was conducted in the 1980s even then described Fairhope as in an urgent state place of peril with historic resources diminishing, you know, too quickly. And of course, 30 years, I guess for 50 years, 40 years later, that continues sort of unabated. So, we are hoping we can find a program that protects Fairhope's resources, historic resources for current and future generations. And evidently, there is, "A Life of Chuck" was filmed right down my street today. Evidently, Fairhope is attractive for business, all kinds of business, and part of that relates to its historic identity. And then finally, one of our goals with this is to provide the city and its residents with access to critical grants and infrastructure support available to places with preservation commissions. So, our approach, this was a very long process for us. We've been gathering input from residents, city council members, the Alabama Historic Commission for more than a year. And of course, this is after other efforts by the commission doing the same thing for a few years. And what I hear, what we hear from residents is that something really needs to be done. And there is debate about what that will look like, but people, I think, generally think something needs to be done. We studied the sample legislation and the Alabama law code, and we reviewed the ordinance across multiple meetings, March 15th, March 28th, April 12th, April 26th, May 10th, May 17th. And I really just can't emphasize enough that we have been working away at this. We also incorporated feedback from the Building Department and the Planning Department before we submitted it to the mayor. Here in this slide, I say we made more than 70 total changes, but when we consider the building and the planning, that's probably closer to 100. So, our main objectives here in terms of what these changes did was modification of membership requirements to fit the volunteer pool we have here in Fairhope. We wanted to eliminate some of the more, we would use the word draconian restrictions, such as paint colors. We wanted to remove fines for failing to maintain historic properties. We wanted to defer the creation of an architectural review board until the city identifies such a need. I don't even know if the city would identify such a need. We wanted to amplify sections that promote education and culture of preservation, including a stage of demolition review, which is something many cities do, it's just a thoughtful step, before something comes down and allows some discussion and efforts to save a house through moving it or something like that. So, otherwise, there are quite a few building and planning suggestions that we incorporated that related to their departments. And then we guessed at some language that brought ordinance close to Fairhope procedures because, you know, that is better left in the hands of the city to do that. So, the powers of the Historic Commission, the, I can't emphasize this point strongly enough, is that all of the ordinances proposed broad powers for the commission, and we did not limit them. And that is because these powers only become active if the city council decides to enact them. And so, we just left them there just as part of the process. And so, here, this slide just calls out where these powers are stated. And I use, obviously, FHPC to refer to our document, which is different than Chris Williams' document, which is CW. So, we can, y'all can read that, I guess, or you reading that, and we can come back to talk about the powers. But essentially, any, any major change would be a recommendation from the commission only, and then it would have to get city council approval before anything could be acted upon. And then additionally, there is an appeals process if a citizen has an objective. So, the conclusion here is that an Historic Commission will give the city, the business owners and residents, critical support for preserving Fairhope's at-risk and dwindling historic resources. The ordinance can be structured, this is our goal, such that a commission plays a positive role, and the city council maintains ultimate authority. It's, I don't want to, it's a minimalist ordinance, I think, as we have proposed it. And no one will be happy who supports preservation because it doesn't really go far enough, but I think it's a good place for, for us to be right now unless the city council wants to take on something like that Chris is proposing. Now, so that is, we, we have some opportunities if we get the commission. If we don't get a commission, that means that the stock will continue to be demolished at a whiplash pace. And residents who wish to preserve their properties voluntarily will not have the tools or resources to do, to do it. And then further, the city will not have access to certain critical grants for preservation or grants of historical places following hurricanes. And that is a huge deal for our area. So, now, a call to action in the green, please act now to, you know, put something in place so that we can save our invaluable resources. Y'all know historical resources, once they come down, you can't take them back. They're one of the most valuable and priceless things that a town has. So, something, y'all have the opportunity to do something to support that. So, the appendix, shall I go through the appendix where we look at both?
Yes.
Okay. So, the comparison overview. So, our goal focuses on demolition review and education. We reflect a volunteer pool and infrastructure of a small town. Our approach, we did discuss it with the AHC because, of course, one of our concerns when we're stripping things out of the ordinance to minimize it is to make sure that we're complying with what they want. And informally, the answer was yes, but we did not send the, our proposal to them until after it went to legal. So, we are waiting for this stage before we send anything further. And then, we also are aware that ours is similar to that of Homewood and other communities in Alabama. Our ordinance, as we strip some things down, is about 15 pages in length. And as it compares to Chris's, it's 22, and that just is to show that there, there is about seven pages of things that we're not asking for. So, now, without having talked with Chris Williams before today at any length on this, our surface impression was what he was proposing was appropriate for a larger city like Mobile that has his, the resources and the population to sustain, you know, full-blown ordinance. And this would include a full-blown certificate of appropriateness section, which is not something that we're advocating Fairhope to get into because that does require some infrastructure. And there are some attention to details like paint colors, which we obviously don't recommend. We don't think that's a productive use of anyone's time. Such a, such a proposal would require substantially more resources from the city to manage. And I'm sure there are some other reasons why he's put in, what he's put in, and there are some elements of the law that we are just, we're not lawyers. We've read the thing a million times, but still, we're not lawyers. So, I know that he has some, quite a bit of valuable information for us. So, in terms of membership and responsibilities, the membership clause that Alabama Historic Commission offers and which Chris Williams's version offers refers to substantial expertise. And, you know, we do have tremendously talented people here in Fairhope with substantial expertise, but not all of them can volunteer their time. And so, we do our best, and we have now learned quite a bit on this job. And so, what we're proposing is some membership requirements that are more in line with what we can bring to the table, not just us, but like our community, what we have here. We did remove the language, serve without compensation, and that's not a sticking point for us, but just thought I would call that out there. There's somewhere it's stating that one-fifth membership may be public officials. And we also don't know if a stipend would be appropriate as opposed to hiring a consultant to do small jobs, a small stipend for someone on the commission as opposed to lots of money to hire an outside person. But I don't know how that works in the city, and so that's not something we'll, we're going to get, we need to get hung up on. And then the responsibilities, there are quite a few responsibilities for education that is hard for working people to, to maintain, and so we sort of scaled down some of the things that we, to a level we felt we could handle. Okay, so, powers. We proposed 15 powers, about 15 powers. Chris Williams proposes 25, and I think some of these powers have to do with maybe differences in the approach. And then, as I state in bullet point two, we retained most of the powers offered in the suggested ordinance from Alabama Historic Commission. Again, for the reasons that the city would have to give approval for those powers to be enacted, and not being lawyers, we did not know if stripping those powers away would inhibit CLG status. And so, that's part of the conversation for Chris Williams. We did not want to acquire property. The suggested ordinance put that in the purview of the commission, and after some, some discussions, felt that it was better left in the city, which already owns and manages historic properties. So, the question about moratorium on applications for alteration or demolition, because we're really working on demolition review, we are encouraging some type of pause for that review to be put in place, and we can talk about that as well. Certificates of appropriateness, so, the, some of the larger ordinances do require the Historic Commissions to step in to issue a certificate of appropriateness for certain building permits or something like that. I'd like to be very clear that that is not something we're advocating whatsoever. We're not advocating that. We just are hoping, as we said, to talk to people at the point of demolition to see if there's something positive that could be done, or helping people to find grants and other opportunities. Section five is a section that we, we encourage not to include, and section five relates to maintaining historic properties. That is in Chris Williams' proposal, it's in the suggested ordinance from the state of Alabama. And we don't think that that is appropriate for Fairhope, and we can talk about why when the discussion, when it's time to discuss it, if you would like. So, that, those are the, the basics, and obviously, I've only had five slides or so about our changes, but we made probably close to 100, so devils in the details, I guess. So, questions or comments or?
Yeah, Chris, have you looked at, have you had the opportunity to look at what the Historic Preservation Committee has proposed? Do you have any, before I open it up to council members, do you have any specific concerns about some of the changes they've made? And maybe not even concerns, but, but things to elaborate on or things for us to consider in deciding what, if any, changes to make?
Yeah, absolutely. If, if I may, you know, kind of putting it in perspective and timeline, they had a proposed draft, obviously worked very hard on it. A lot of it followed a lot of the statute, the Alabama Historic Commission's kind of template, and they made several modifications. And prior to the last work session where we discussed this, I went through, reviewed it, and I want to be upfront on a couple of things. One, there's, there's multiple things that we're juggling here, okay? There's statutory compliance under the Alabama statute. We also are trying to make sure, because my understanding is, one of the major driving factors for the city to do this is to get CL, certified local government, CLG status. There are certain requirements that may not specifically be set out in the statute that are also part of that program. And so, we're trying to juggle a few different kind of aspects to make sure we're working toward the same goal. It's my just overall opinion that we're not going to be able to do this halfway and get CLG status. For a very simplified term, CLG status, specifically, one of the things they require is a city staff person to be designated to be the liaison. I didn't mean to cut you off. I can keep going or I'll?
Okay, go ahead. I'll just finish.
Okay. And so, so some of the, and so what we did is, I did a red line, I took their version, add some provisions that I thought from the statute were required. I added some provisions that I thought may need to be considered to achieve CLG status. And then the third part, and I absolutely agree with her, there's a couple of sections in here which make it longer that are entirely optional. My partners represent several other similar organizations in Mobile and other municipalities, smaller and larger. And so, they have ran these traps before. And so, some of these things that they brought to my attention, I want to just put before y'all to consider as a, you know, maybe we should consider this. One of the things, we're talking about maintenance. All of that was not, they, I completely agree, they didn't suggest any of that. That was all language that came from one of my partners. Because there's a fine line on historic preservation, if you get down the road of properties falling into a state of disrepair because of lack of maintenance, and then you have a potential blighted property problem versus a historic property problem, and the two can kind of bump up against each other sometimes. I don't advocate one way or the other for it. I just wanted y'all to have that thought process in terms of potential consequences and things to think about, big picture, that have other communities and other local governments have experience in going through this process. I would say that if you take out a couple of those big things, their, their version and my version are very similar. I think there's a couple, handful of things that I tweaked either specifically on the membership requirements, the membership requirements are specifically called out in Alabama statute. And so, adding to those membership requirements, and then the, the CLG from the Alabama Historic Commission has specific designated membership criteria that have to be met. And that's important because to get CLG status, you have to have at least three professionals on the planning commission that meet those criteria. And so, I don't think we can just add different types, like, I think, trying to remember one of the examples, of one that wasn't set forth by statute, anthropology. That wasn't called out for statute. So, I don't think we can just create that area as a professional under the membership requirements if it's not allowed in the statute.
Right.
The certificate of appropriateness is specifically, has multiple sections called out in the statute. And so, from a big picture, and I know, we talked about this a little bit, kind of the way ordinance would work is, this ordinance would be creating a, a Historical Preservation Commission, all right? And there are a lot of powers that the Alabama statute says that the planning, not the planning commission, excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission shall have, shall, mandatory language. And so, it lists 13 of them. And so, if we're creating this commission, that commission shall have those powers according to state statute. Now, there's a couple that maybe are optional, or we can consider, you know, redefining or trying to put some limits on. But the statute calls for, if you're having the commission, these, this commission shall have these powers. And so, what I'm concerned about is if, you know, so we have the commission set up, and then generally, there'll be a survey done of properties, and the commission will have the ability to identify either historic properties or historic districts, that it will then come to the city council after kind of a notice and comment period, notice to the public, public hearing, and can recommend either a historic property or historic district be added. And ultimately, she's absolutely right, council would have the final decision to, to agree to that and either create a district or create a historic, or designate a historic property. But once that happens, the law triggers certain kind of safeguards and requirements. And so, that's where the certificate of appropriateness comes in. If you have a building that's designated historic property, what is the process to renovate it, to tear it down? And so, some of the procedures that I've suggested in here that follow the Alabama code and/or the model by the state, you know, if we're having a commission, I think the council needs to, in its enabling ordinance, have some procedures set out because one of the powers the, the commission has is to create its own rules and bylaws and that sort of thing. If you create the commission without giving them a framework of some of your, you know, procedures and the expectations and powers, the commission has the ability to create some of their own powers, arguably. And so, that's kind of why spelling out some of those provisions, I think, is appropriate. And the certificate of appropriateness, I don't know, we would have to consult with the state to make sure, but if you take out that whole provision, that seems to be one of the major points of the whole statute, statutory framework. So, I would question if you took out that process, if you could still get CLG status. And it may be that you can. I've not had that specific discussion. But it seems to me, if you're creating the process, you have to have the what-happens-if part of the process on the back end. On the moratorium part, the statute doesn't call for a moratorium at all, and frankly, I question, the proposed language had a moratorium while a district or a property is being considered, not after it's already been found by the council to be a historic property or in a historic district. And so, without having a specific statutory authority for a moratorium, really had questions about interfering with property rights on a moratorium of that nature without specifically having spelled out in the statute. There's ability of the, of the commission and possibly the city to get involved after a property is designated a historic property or a district, but I'd caution against a moratorium while that process is being debated on the front end. Paint colors, I completely agree. The statute says that the council and the, and the commission may consider paint colors. We can certainly take that out. That's certainly not a problem. And we can take out the maintenance section, too, if council doesn't want to go down that path. The only point being, there may come a time where we have to figure out how to address properties that are designated historic that aren't being maintained properly, and what, what happens then.
Thank you, Chris. Council, anybody got any questions based on what they've heard so far tonight or this afternoon?
I'd just share with the council, I definitely think that obtaining the CLG status is critical to the whole, the whole concept, because if you don't get that, then you don't have the avenue, I guess, to get various historical tax credits for people that are looking to do renovations of, of different projects. So, to me, that was sort of the primary focus, was getting that status so that you could then open those doors for people that wanted to have some type of benefit from renovating a historic property.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I mean, that was, and this is something we've communicated, you know, or discussed in, in meetings, is that was obviously, I think, one of the driving forces to be able to entice these property owners with, with historic tax incentives to be, to preserve this property. And, and obviously, so we want to do what we can to, to, and however this ordinance is worded, to make sure that that's, that's in there, that we qualify for that. Corey, Jack?
And then Corey, I know you had something earlier. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I, we talked, we were, I was just listening, I was just doing a little due diligence there. Chris brought it up. I, I was just going to ask, you know, what did it look like to walk into the CLG, create the ordinance, but walk into the CLG? You know, like crawl before you walk type deal? Get the ordinance in place and continually build on it, amend, build? Is that possible, that we can do those things without getting into a pickle?
You have to have a few certain things to qualify for CLG status.
Whoa.
And so, this ordinance would be the first step, establishing a commission.
Got it.
You also have to have a zoning ordinance, which we obviously have, and you have to have a comprehensive plan, which we have. There's some membership requirements and some educational requirements, a staff liaison person as part of that. But conceivably, I think your question is, yeah, absolutely, we could have the ordinance and get the commission up and running, and then work through the state to apply for the CLG status and refine things if needed to make sure we get that status, certainly.
Okay. Yeah, and my thought on that is, is hearing, you know, kind of the presentation is, let's put it in there because we can't do anything anyway. I'm specifically talking about some of the powers that are identified here is, you know, and I'm blanking on which one specifically that, that applied to that, but it was, you know, we can't do that until the council does X, so it's really kind of a powerless power, so let's keep it in there. My thought is, is act opposite. If it doesn't actually have any meaning at the time, I'd rather take it out, and we can always add it back if the council decides to do that, but not if it impacts CLG status. And so, that's what I want to make sure is, that, you know, and I just kind of circled a couple of these, reading through it again and listening to the presentation, that may be easy to take out because I'm not sure they're going to apply either way, but it might.
So, yeah, Jay, I'm, I'm right there with you. That's, that's kind of down the road that I'm trying to get at. It's, you know, is there a happy medium here as we grow and learn, but get started, you know, so we're not all tangled? You know, I know God is in the details, but this is not the final.
Correct.
It's a fluid document.
Correct. My, my suggestion was to have this discussion to hear, to let them have the benefit of our discussion and hear my point of view. I'm happy to sit down with them and kind of refine this to a more proposed, kind of finalized draft version with their, when they can hear kind of the, the thought process of why I included some. some things and took some things out. I do think it would be helpful from the council's perspective before we go to that step to for y'all to weigh in on specifically the sections that aren't required.
Yeah.
But that may be something to think about. In particular, the section talking, I mean.
Demolition?
Yes. The demolition and the certificate of appropriateness and then the the maintenance section.
So I was, that was my next question, if I may, Chairman. Right now, where do we stand on a nuisance property? I heard you say that, like, there is a, there is a line there that kind of blends between nuisance and and historical, not kept up versus nuisance and and imminent domain. So can you kind of feed on that a little bit? What's, is there?
Ken, I know.
And Eric.
Eric's here, too.
Okay.
Is my understanding, without speaking out of turn with Eric, because as a citizen, I relied on this one time.
Okay.
That the city does have an ordinance generally to protect property owners from a nuisance or a property that is in such a state of disrepair that it could be a safety or health hazard.
Yeah. And I feel like we actually, in the not so recent past, actually had had one torn down, maybe on.
Oh, we've got several in the works now. We have a condemned buildings ordinance. We don't have anything that addresses blight or unsightly. And I get a lot of those calls that there's different between, there's a difference between unsightly and actually condemnable. Right. But it it specifically spells out structural requirements that would qualify it as as a condemnable building. And, yeah, we've had a couple of torn down and I've actually got two that are in the works now that I've been working with with Marcus as we find them, but it has to meet very specific criteria. And it it has to do with structural stability and collapsing walls and less than 30% of the foundation is damaged more than, so that's what we have.
And so for historic preservation, I guess, the idea or the thought process is, you know, if something is designated historic, either in a district or whatever, the building itself or the district itself, and this property is allowed to get into such a state of disrepair, that's that's the equivalent of a demolition? Is that kind of the?
The statute specifically says that if a property gets in such a state of disrepair that it's hazardous, I mean, it's not performing its historical significance because it's completely, you know, worn down, falling apart, caving in on itself, then it's noncompliant. And so then the question becomes what to do with that.
Well, yeah, I guess that's, yeah, I guess that's my question is what do you, I mean, if it's if it's a nonhistoric property, then you tear it down because it's.
Well, yeah, what it is, yes, sir, you're allowed, you, we have to give a notification. They have 45 days to engage or respond to that notification and they have the option to either repair it, tear it down, and if we get no response, then the city, I go out and we get three quotes for the teardown for the demolition, then we come to the city council, ask you to appropriate the money to pay that that third party contractor, and then we lean the property. That's that's our current process.
It sounds like that process will work for historical and it sounds like protection's already there for something historical because if it's historical, then it would be marked historical and it would be on the site of the historical commission to where they would have the opportunity to get a grant once we become CLG to do the repair.
If it reaches to the level of condemnable, that is a safety issue, but you may not be preserving the historic.
Right. So.
The historic nature, it may not be condemnable, but it's still maybe losing its historic significance.
Yeah, so that's that's my sort of question with this is, you know, if it's nonhistoric, then what Eric just said applies. It's either we either, you got 30, 40, what is it?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days to repair or tear down.
Or reply.
And then and then we'll, and if not, we do it and we will.
We lean the property, that's correct.
All right. But if it's historic, we don't want to tear it down.
Right.
And so and we don't want to lean the property. We want to, we want to preserve it. So so then, then what do you, then where?
Who pays for it? That's going to be the question.
Who pays for it? Because I'm guessing preservation is a lot more expensive than demolition. And so then the idea is, where does that come from? Who does it?
Yes, yeah. Well, one of the things we do, and you know, the the ordinance calls for, once we send the legal notification, they have 45 days to respond. We're not going, we typically, I cannot think of an instance where we have gone in and after 45 days made somebody tear it down. I generally send a second courtesy notice. It doesn't necessarily say that, but making someone tear down a piece of property they own is a big legal step and that's a big decision. So we try to be as friendly or as as much as we can work with our residents on that. So one of the things we do now, and I was telling a couple of the members, when we get a demolition permit application, I review and issue all of those. The first thing I do is I currently go to the Schneider report, which is what we have access to, and I verify if that property is or is not listed as either a contributing or noncontributing structure in one of the districts on the Schneider report. If it is listed, I send out a review comment that this property is listed as historic on the 2017 Schneider report. I will send them a copy of the sheet listing the specific structure, what the what the relevance is, and tell them this project is, this property is eligible for tax credits, federal, state, or other to preserve the property and that we encourage our citizens to preserve a historic property if at all possible. If they decide they're not going to do it, I issue the demo permit and they go. But we at least make them aware, you know, in our permit system that it is listed on one of our, on our report, on one of our, on the Schneider report.
So once again, it protects, I'm hearing that it protects, to answer the question that Councilman Robertson asked, is that now, instead of, unless it's just falling down, and that's a, that's a dangerous, but if it's just out of what we consider, whatever, it's now in a condition to where you can apply for the grants, right? That's where the money would come from.
But how, but how long does that take? And if it takes?
Do you, do you, is it a matter of time if we're, or are we thinking it's a ISO?
Well, no, no, well, I'm saying if if something's truly, if something's truly designed or designated historic and it gets to the point where we can, according to this ordinance, intervene, all right? And and this, and I don't know how far along in the state of disrepair it has to get to qualify for that. That's, I guess, something else that would have to be decided. But I don't imagine that there's any grant money that can be obtained in a relatively short period.
And it would have to come from the property owner. The city could not, if it's a, a property in disrepair and if you're, I think, thinking that the city could go through the process. Well, but the issue is you have to go get that lien and it would, the city doesn't own that property, can the city apply for grant money on a property they don't own to do historic preservation?
Well, if we, if it comes to us in liability, right, as a lien.
The lien isn't done until we take action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But but the lien doesn't come until we actually spend the money to have something torn down.
Torn down, that's correct.
So it has to go way before the lien.
After the action.
Or some action, either demolition or preservation itself has to occur. We've got to be out money.
I don't know, I don't think we could go in and.
And preserve it.
Renovate.
No, 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 we couldn't do that. I know that. I'm speaking of the transition.
Sure.
And and there's also maybe a way that, you know, I'm getting into weeds, but there are also ways, once it becomes, so by the time you place it as a lien, even if it's historic, do you have to demolish it, right?
The lien is only done if we demolish the property.
If it's demolished, that's the only time.
And we pay the contractor for the demo and then that amount plus, I think, administrative fees are then sent as a lien against that property.
So I understand that y'all are talking about sort of worst case scenario here, but what I would like to just add is that a preservation ordinance would help the property owner get the grants before something fell into disrepair. And that is really the goal. And the the case that that we're describing now is not going to be significant. I mean, it's not going to be significant number of.
Not a high percentage. The only thing that I run into with the condemnation is we have a lot of absentee owners that have properties in disrepair. They're not here, it's out of sight, it's out of mind. I've had to send notices to Chicago, I've had to send notices to Memphis, I've had to send notices to Texas because people who own the property aren't here, it's been in their family forever, they don't think about Fairhope, Alabama. So that comes up actually more often than not with the demos. So that would really, I guess, be the only situation where we might have what is a historic property, but the owner is absentee and they're not worried about maintaining it until somebody actually forces their hand. That, that, I could foresee that happen.
I guess if a commission could intercede or intervene before it got to the point of a demo.
Sure.
Something that the commission could, a positive action of the commission.
Yeah, and that's something we've talked about as far as the the commission being able to, yeah, educate and maybe make recommendations to the owner and maybe even the city about the reasons for preserving or the ways to preserve. Now, there's no teeth in that, it's just a recommendation, but I mean, obviously, anything, something is better than nothing, but but I'm just trying to think it from a legal standpoint as to what we can legally do and what we can't.
Sure.
And to go back to your question, Chris, as far as the maybes on this, my thought would be, and it's just me, is if it's a, if it's a maybe and not a requirement, take it out.
Yeah.
I mean, let's, let's, my, what I envision is initially at least, a bare bones ordinance to comply with a, with a CLG that allows us to create the commission, qualify for CLG, and get this thing started.
That's right.
And then we can always fine tune.
Yes.
Powers.
There you go.
Now, I'd rather those powers be as limited as possible to start and let us expand those powers as we see the need and as the commission sort of grows into itself.
Right.
But at the same time, we've got to, they've got to be in there. And and that's, I guess, that's the biggest hang up, I think, that I'm seeing as we go forward is, can you, whatever is going to be required for CLG versus what the commission is comfortable sort of having, either either whether it's comfortable because it's not enough or comfortable because you feel it's too much. And that's kind of where the balance has to be. But that's, if I'm asking you to do something with this, I would say strike anything that's not mandatory and 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 create those powers to the point where they're limited but compliant with the CLG. That's, that's what I would want to see.
That would be my, I would agree with that.
Yeah. Also, Chris, the things that you were concerned about as far as powers, at this time, could you write an antidote to those particular things to, to kind of manage or retard those particular powers?
Yes. So for instance, in one of our proposed revisions, you know, the the statute gives the commission the ability to purchase, sell, contract to purchase, contracts to sell, own, encumber, lease, mortgage, or insure real or personal property. And that's right out of the statute. And that's a shall provision. I imagine, you know, they don't have any funding, so what I've suggested in the revision is, I mean, obviously, you'd have to get council approval for that. Council has to sign off because it's financial. We put in, give them that power, subject to.
Council approval.
Council approval, basically.
There you go.
Yeah, that, that, I think that's the.
I think that's beautiful.
And look.
Yep.
I don't, you know, kind of educate the commission the same way that we were educated as elected officials is, our, our power as councilmen only applies to when we're sitting right here. I go out down the street and say, hey, I'd like to buy a fleet of vehicles for the city of Fairhope, sign a contract, I come back in, I'm like, hey, guys, I need, I need eight grand. And they're like, you're on, you're on the hook for that, that's you. Same thing would apply for the commission. You've got, acquire as much property as you want, but without council approval, everybody get out the checkbooks.
That's funny.
You know, and then that's kind of the way, I mean.
Certainly.
And so as long as that's a provision that's in there, that that protects the commission, protects the council, protects the city.
Right.
But also qualifies for CLG.
Right.
I, I got no issue there.
Bingo. I think that's the.
Perfect. Well, I think it's easy enough for us to get together and we can even confirm with the state on our proposed version to make sure we still are qualifying for CLG status on those two particular issues and questions. And then I think we can have a final draft to y'all for consideration.
Okay.
Very good. Committee members, I know.
That sounds great. We welcome working with Chris and I'm going to get a draft, too.
Perfect.
Gary, should you have to buy a sandwich?
We have to do what? Buy sandwiches?
Yeah.
Oh.
We're almost there.
Yeah. Yeah. Feed us. Feed us some more.
Thank you, guys. Y'all got anything, any other comments?
No, we're really grateful for where we are.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you for the hard work.
I think what what Chris just proposed, we we definitely look forward to doing that. And I, and I think all of us had made a mistake a while back by not realizing that that was a more efficient way to do it. We kind of did it one at a time. I think I reviewed most of what he did very carefully and agree with several things he said. And if we had been able to do all this together at one time, I think we'd have done it more efficiently. And I think this is a perfect way to settle, to to get things together, to give you all something that both from his standpoint and from our standpoint makes sense. So I think this is a great idea and we'll start working on it. Thank you all for doing this tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Skip.
Thank you, guys. All right. We ready for Eagle Reef presentation?
Well, afternoon. So a while back, we had mentioned through the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board update from Councilman Martin about something called Eagle reefs. So we are actually going to be deploying some of these reefs on our city peers this week. So we thought this would be a great time for us to bring in the the founder of this project and talk to you a little bit about what the reef is and what the reefs are, what they can do, and what they hope to see in the future. So we have John Shell and Jeb Shell, who this was actually, the reason why it's called Eagle Reef is because it was an Eagle Scout project that Jeb started. So he's going to talk to you a little bit about why he started the project and then John's going to talk a little bit about how we move forward with it.
Good evening.
Good evening, young man.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this good?
Yeah, you're good, brother. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So this project started on a Boy Scout fishing trip years ago and we didn't really catch any fish there and I wasn't really used to that because me and my dad, we always knew the spots to go and where to go. And so when the whole troop went on this trip and there wasn't really much around and I was just really not used to that. And so it got me thinking about, how can I, how can I make this more fun for people? How could, how can people who come here want to, want to come here again and like brag about their experience of coming down to the coast and fishing and catching fish? And so I researched for an Eagle project that would do that and I found Ocean Habits, which is a company in Florida, Dr. Wolf, and he, he makes the reefs and puts them out, he put, he put them out all through Florida and they made a really, they made a real impact there. They cleaned out a lot of the canals and stuff and there's fish booming over there right now. So I just wanted to bring that here. The reefs primarily act as a place for, habitat for different filter feeders, like oysters or barnacles. But as I've started to see now, there, all the plant life that attached to them as well and they provide cover for tiny shrimp and stuff that big fish and baby fish eat. So when it starts out, they start out with the filters, which, filter feeders, which are oysters and barnacles and they filter out the water, which cleans out toxins and impurities in the water. And, sorry, a little under the weather, so.
You're great.
Thank you. And once the barnacles and oysters attach to the reef, they multiply on the reef and just grow and grow and grow. And they float on top of the water, so you don't really have to worry about attaching them here, attaching them there. They're just attached around pylons and they float up and down with the pylons. And the longer you can leave them out there, the more they'll reproduce on their own. It's not a, a matter of if solely oysters grow on them, it boosts the ecosystem of wherever they are. So if there's more barnacles where they are, it'll do more barnacles, but it will overall just. just increase the ecosystem and give a habitat to the ecosystem of where it is. So, this is a picture of one of them, or two of them, tied together actually. You can see there's a lot of growth on every side. Those parts actually, when you put them in, they start floating above the water, and you can see as all this stuff starts growing, it, they slowly start to get lower in the water and provide more habitat for things to grow on. You see, there's a bunch of barnacles on there, and this is a reef that's been out there for nine months. If you want to look at this video.
Wow. That's great.
Crabs, fish, all of them love to just sit in there and escape their predators, so, and the predators like to come around there because they know they're in there. So, it attracts fish and a, all, but, all a bunch of other things. There's another one. There's a crab right there. This one was six months. It also depends where you put it, because in some areas, there's a lot of oysters, and some areas there's not, but any area that you put it in, stuff is gonna grow on it. We haven't found a spot where the stuff doesn't grow, so it's just a matter of time. So, yeah, everybody participates in this. We found this, we see him often trying to eat fish off our pier, but when he found that, figured out what the, what reefs were doing, they're, he wanted in on it. So, the reefs, what we have found later in the month, in the later months, we've discovered that the shrimp, like fish, tiny fish and shrimp actually like, like to live inside of it and like, has kind of escaped the baby redfish or whatever type of fish is like swimming around, trying to eat them. And so, this is a video where you can see juvenile redfish going around, trying to eat all the little shrimp that are just coming out from the reef. And that's a bigger one. So, it attracts the babies, it attracts the big fish, it attracts everything. It's a, just a big boost for the whole environment. The filter feeders. So, when one reef is over, is loaded with oysters, it'll filter about 30,000 gallons daily of water and up to 10 million gallons annually. So, when we did, when I first started the project, it was around 50 reefs that we were gonna put out, but as the success kept rolling in and people were like, hey, I kind of want that, they saw on their neighbor's wharfs, I kind of want that too. So, the numbers that we're gonna get from this project are a lot bigger than intentional, and we're gonna filter a lot more water than we thought we were gonna. So, one mature oyster releases 100 million spat into the water annually. That's about 10 billion per loaded reef annually. And as we put out these reefs and as more oysters grow on each of the reefs, it'll just exponentially grow all the populations of oysters that have kind of been, not receding, but they haven't been as much there as they have in, in the past. So, this is to kind of reestablish the oyster populations wherever they're, they're favorable, and maybe even bring them back to places that they're gone from now. These are all of the, some of the locations of the reefs that we have put out. What you can see is pretty much everywhere around Mobile Bay and kind of into that area Prudito Bay, and there was over $50,000 raised for this project to put out 175 of them, and all across the coastal Alabama. And we're hoping with this partnership with PEP that we're gonna reach 1,000 reefs and... Okay. All right. So, we are expanding. We're looking for PEP, the Partners for Environmental Progress, for helping with funding and just places that want to help out and give to nations. The Stokes School of Marine Environmental Sciences at University of South Alabama has chimed in because they want to use this as an opportunity to educate that students, and So, the PEP will raise the money through their business partners. The Stokes School of Marine Environmental Sciences at South will coordinate, monitor, and test, and report, and the Marine Resources Division, Alabama, will support and complement the state programs that are already here. So, these reefs will mostly go on like personal docks and wharfs, that is what we have been doing with the 175 we already have out. But we have started to, some, some of the places that we have put them are municipal piers, like we have one, was it near Oso? Not Oso, what? Near Bear Point, yeah, that's what it was. Bear Point, and we have one of the reefs out at the public pier, which is helping a great, a great lot. Some restaurants, we're thinking about wanting to get one, and marinas. So, any, basically anywhere where the water is above two feet deep, these things can go and they'll boost the ecosystem of wherever they are. So, in the right conditions, and once loaded up with oysters, 1,000 reefs will equal up to 10 billion gallons of water filtered annually. And I learned about the filtering part after I initially gone into the project with the make more fish. Tourists want to remember when they get, when they come here, they want to, they want to come back. And so, when I learned about the filtering part of this reef system, I was like, so it'll attract fish and it'll make the water cleaner? So like, that's great.
That's true.
Yeah. And 1,000 reefs create and facilitate up to 500,000 fish, shrimp, and crabs annually. So, other big plus. The 1,000 reefs could release 100 billion oyster spat into the water annually, and each year, these numbers should grow as new oysters attach in the new locations and reach maturity. So, it'll just be an exponential growth once we start putting them out in different places and kind of opening the reach of the oysters that are mostly centered around the entrances to the Gulf. So, the, the potential locations for Eagle reefs in the city of Fairhope, the Orange Street Pier, the White Street Pier, Municipal Pier, Fringer Pier, Finger Pier, North Beach Park Pier, and also the Fly Creek, Mouth of the Bay, North Beach Park Pier, the Welcome Center in downtown Fairhope, and outside for display only. That one because the project that I did of the 175, a good bit of that money came from just individuals wanting to donate money to the cause. Not all of them even wanted to like put a reef under their dock. Not all of them had docks, they just wanted to help the environment and help support this project. So, I think having one on display will boost this project even more than if it was just by word of mouth and people like their neighbors saying, hey, what is that? So, I think having one in display would help this project and boost it a lot. Can you come?
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm getting all stuffy.
You did great. All right, and I know y'all are busy, so we'll, first of all, thank City of Fairhope, and thank you all for letting John come out and also for supporting this project. Tom Bramlett is here. Tom's one of the founders of Partners for Environmental Progress, and, and they came on board to take as a partner to the Eagle Reef along with the Stokes School of Marine Sciences and DNCR. DNCR's been great. Chris Blankenship, y'all, I'm sure all know him, is just an absolute jewel and treasure for the state to have, but he was actually, they're the ones who signed up on John's project. So where does it go from here? One, we're gonna get to 1,000 reefs, but there's opportunities. You could raft 50 of these up and hover them over a bed they're trying to, to get, and oyster drills can't get to them because they're suspended in the water column, so they can continue to do that. You can move rafts in some places where if you've got a spill or something that's going on, you can float a raft up in there, 50 of them, to clean the water in an area where you know you've had issues. And one thing they're doing in Florida that we could bring here is carbon and nutrient capture tax credits. So a lot of farms up the river and industrial folks up the river in Decatur or wherever could give money to, to do carbon and nutrient capture down here. Also, this is, they're looking at duplicating this, once this is done, there's other, other areas, you can see Pasagola, Pensacola, Galveston, Destin, Appalachia Cola. So, we were gonna bring one today, but it was pouring down rain when we got to the house. John's already sick, so I didn't make him go grab one off the side of the house, but, but we appreciate y'all doing, we look forward to it, and mainly, what can y'all do? You've done a lot already. Spread the words. If you've got businesses, this is a tax deductible thing either to Partners of Environmental Progress, they have a nonprofit, the Eagle Reef is actually, eagle reef dot com is actually a nonprofit as well, but, but one of these that happens is it'll just start building and building, and if you've got a dock, that, those videos are from our dock, and the, and the redfish and speckled trout have just exploded since we've been there, so everybody wins, and, go ahead.
Y'all are catching, not fishing.
Well, and needless to say, I'm a very, very proud dad, but I'm also a, a very avid outdoorsman, I fish with, with, with some of y'all, and, and we are selfishly wanting to clean the, the bay up, but also to bring fish in, and like John said, when he first started, he didn't say it on this one, but he said, I want a grandfather to be able to take the grandson and fish from the bank and catch fish, is what he said in his Eagle project. So we're proud of him, we appreciate y'all being a partner in this, and if y'all have any questions, the PEP's website, it's got a lot of information, and eagle reef dot com does as well. Any questions?
A question.
Yeah.
How long do the reefs last? What's the life expectancy? Will the barnacles ever displace the oysters and then you have to replace the reef?
The, the barnacles actually, I mean, the oysters are actually force out barnacles, depending where they are, and, and we're looking at, we haven't done it yet, but looking at getting some sacks of live adult, adult oysters, and so you think about some areas where there's not a lot of oysters, you can bring live oysters, put them on the reef, and then they can restart a population that's there. The gentleman down in Florida that, David, what's his last name? Wolf, David Wolf, he's had some out for decades.
Decades.
Yeah. The way, the material they use and all that kind of stuff, some of them have survived hurricanes, and it's, it just depends, they go up and down with the tide, and once they load up, they've got enough oysters to where they kind of stay right at the surface or below, but we've seen the results there. I'm, I'm probably gonna try to get some adult murder point or Admiral oysters and put them on ours, because if, as they spread and get on the pylons and on the rocks around our place, I'd like to be able to go out there and get some when the, when the conditions are right, but, any other questions?
Are these reefs designed a certain way, or can it just be anything?
Well, I mean, that, that one's up there, David Wolf was a marine biology doctoral candidate down in University of South Florida. He designed these, you need the layers like that so that they can stack and it holds it. You could pretty much have anything, but he did these 20 years ago, and then he, once he got done, he went into the insurance and real estate world, he's kind of coming back in and trying to get it going now that he's left that world, but they float right above the surface, and the, the layered approach he's got, it's funny, the, the ropes that go up and down, it's hard to see from here, but it's a bunch of ropes you'd see on a crab pot, and they go up and down, and they attach to the columns first, and then they spread out and go from there. But it's, that one picture that John showed of the redfish chasing, there's a little minnow and the, and the juvenile redfish will, will kind of bum rush the, the reef to try to scare one out. They'll scare one out, and there'll be 20 of them trying to chase them, and that one actually made it back into the reef. He got out in the light and he was swimming, did everything he could, made it back into the reef, and we just happened to be standing there to catch the video, it was kind of cool.
So, one more question.
Sure.
So it looks like they're suspended under the piers, so it won't affect boat traffic if you have people that need to park parallel to the pier? I'm thinking back to the municipal pier, you put it under it so it wouldn't affect any potential future.
Would be under Finger Pier, so it's not getting more than.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good.
There's, there's rollers that go around the pylons, and so they're suspended, and they, you kind of want them in the, in the shade, because in the shade, the stuff that grows on grows better, but they've got these rollers so they go up and down with the tide and with wave action, as long as they can go up and down with the tide and wave action. In fact, we've got one, we got a fix that somebody didn't install right, and she just tied it off, and the wave action kind of ripped the top of it out, but these will go up and down, but if, if somebody gets their boat in deep enough to get into one of these, then, then you got a bigger problem, they got a bigger problem, but.
Yeah. How, how long does it take for them to mature, to, to collect the ecosystem?
They'll be, we put ours out, and we're Lilian, but we put ours out, what was it, last spring? And, spring a year ago, and there was growth on it immediately, and once it, once it started warming up, then things, but it, the, the ones he showed you, the first one, that was nine months. Now, that one was an old river, it's a lot more higher salinity, and there's a lot more tidal flow coming through there, so that one got pretty good. The one with the crabs on it is on the north side of Ono, so there's not as much tidal flow, a little more brackish water, or not completely salty. That one's starting to load up now, but we had, we had stuff growing and little minnows and stuff on ours after a few months.
Okay.
Some, you know, the soft stuff will grow.
Yeah.
And then, and then the hard stuff, one that attaches, will start forcing the soft stuff out, and that first one is kind of neat, I didn't know we had these, but they were sea squirts. If y'all, y'all got the, I think, copy of the video.
Yeah.
There's sea, there's stuff I didn't know we had here, looked like South Florida with, I mean, the only thing that went on there was coral, it was kind of neat.
Yeah. Pretty cool.
Any other questions?
Great job.
It was great, man.
Appreciate you, appreciate y'all's time, and, and good job, John. And thank you again to PEP for coming on as a partner.
I just wanted to thank them again for being here. Also, thank Nicole, she's worked hard on this project. I was actually down at the Grand Hotel when they did the presentation for this, and they deployed them down there at the Grand Hotel, and really wanted Fairhope to be part of it. So, you know, as we continue to work, to work on the health of Mobile Bay with the litter getters and all those kind of things, I think it's important to continue to show our citizens and also educate schoolchildren about how important it is to, to, to look out for the health of Mobile Bay and to do these kind of projects. So, excited to be able to do it and look forward to seeing the reefs and, and what we'll find on them.
Hey, what do we got? Rebecca Wallace here, and that's one more part of that is, South partnering with us brings marine sciences in, so we have a grad student that's gonna study these tests on how the 48, 48 volunteers, and they're gonna do a long-term study that'll be available to y'all and everybody on how effective they are, so that we can tell, I mean, there's chemical plants, you know, all those members of PEP, of Chevron, Cibah, you know, Alabama Howard, and all those folks, and we're gonna study it long-term and see how we can amplify that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Again, and also use it as an educational tool. We'll have these where the Pelican's Nest, when they're doing their trips down to the bay, they'll be able to utilize them. We'll also have signage, working in conjunction with PEP and South, have signage to explain to people what they are and where they can find information on them with a QR code or something. So, really exciting project and something that I'm happy that Fairhope's able to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the work session agenda is discussion on city council rules of procedure. Uh, you know, just looking at this.
Yeah, it's just rubbish rules.
You know, I don't know, maybe, maybe you guys have looked at it, but, you know, section 10 of our current rules, I guess, say, no council member shall speak more than twice on the same subject without permission of the presiding officer. Have we ever?
But we, it's just.
But we do listen to normally say.
Permission is pretty much.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm more speaking to myself, because when I wasn't sitting in this chair, I, I don't, I'm, I'm more forgiveness than permission, I guess, is.
It's just rubbish rules.
It's not.
It's rubbish rules.
I believe you ask.
Yeah, you ask.
We'll send you know if you get out of line.
And then, and then the next is every officer whose duty it is to report at the regular city council meeting, who shall be in default thereof, may be fined at the discretion of the council.
I think it's just like, yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I just didn't know, I just don't know, didn't know it was.
It's just, we never.
We're gonna have some stick, but otherwise everybody.
It's just rubbish rules.
Be sick every May.
Jack finds a couple times for dress code, I think.
Yeah. All right. So, what's, who wants to lead this?
I'll be happy to, to start out and just say how we, how we got here. I think that we have talked a few times about the council agenda and just being able to group things differently in the agenda, like move the community stuff to the top of the agenda, to be able to possibly. agenda, to be able to possibly look at consent agenda, to be able to group things by department. When we talked about possibly revamping committees, we talked about that. So that's where this really came from. And I really think those are the only, really, two items. If you look on the, at the end of the ordinance, there's a page that kind of recaps everything, there's really only a few things that would move the order of the agenda. And that would be moving the community stuff to the top and grouping stuff by department.
Council president may I speak?
You may.
Because I may speak twice. So if you go back to what, I talked to Lisa about this for a while today, and we talked about it in the past, and some of the genesis of this is, how did it get into the order that it's in? And I think the premise was to put the most important items at the beginning of the agenda so that, for whatever reason, you, you know that you addressed the most important items. And some of those that are pretty much rubber stamped, you know, when we give, you know, a temporary liquor license or something, it's already been vetted by the police, it's almost a formality, right? We never turn that down. So I think it was to get the important business at the front. And then the, then the second reason was that there is an Alabama League of Municipal, Alabama League of Municipalities sample, format or sample agenda. And so that, it follows that pretty closely, with the exception that we have two public participation, which I'm proud that we have that. So we added one back in 2000, November of 2012. So I think that's the reason that it, that it came about, and there may be a couple of things that can be stricken. There's a part about our, our agenda that says, you know, certain committee reports, the committees don't exist, so we don't even have to have that. But we don't put it on the agenda anyway, so it doesn't hurt to take it out. If we ever did form those committees, we would know exactly where it would go in the agenda, or where it would now. So I see the need maybe to occasionally move when we have a big group of people that are waiting for a real simple answer, and they're sitting around waiting, and we usually move them to the top. But we don't do that every meeting, so when the mayor asked for feedback on this, we didn't, we didn't get a whole lot of feedback. So is it, is it really an issue? Is the agenda order really an issue? I don't know that it really is. I mean, and like Cory said, a lot of this is already Robert's Rules of Order. That's why it's in there. Importance, that's why things are up at the top. And then a suggestion by the League of Municipalities would be another reason of why it was in that one. I'm not so sure that we need to tweak them. I mean, I don't have, I'm not gonna, you know, just fight, fight, fight for something like that. But I don't know that we couldn't keep it the way it is, and we have a big group of people that are waiting for a request to be granted, that we don't just move it to the beginning like, like we do now. It's another way to look at it.
Yeah, if I may, I guess, you know, the, the one thing to me that would be efficient would be kind of grouping directors together. So if they've got three or four items on the agenda, putting them in a row would make sense, just so when they come up here, they go, you know, one, two, three in a row, rather than up, sit down, back up a couple items later. And I think that's just a function of us putting things on the agenda as they come in, as probably just done in order. And I think Councilman Burrell brings up an interesting point, because what, is it better to address the potentially longer topics that have the most people here and take care of the most important business first and then go ahead and dismiss? Or do you dismiss, or do you go ahead and try to push forward the items that you think are only gonna last, you know, one or two minutes so they can get on about their evening? And I don't know, I guess you could go either way on which one makes more sense.
Yeah, and I think, I guess my first thing is, you know, if you spread the directors out, you, you, you make them stay here the whole meeting instead of letting them do their thing and get out. So that's, yeah.
And that's not the intent, is to let them, I mean, most of, the majority of them will stay anyway, unless they text and say, "Hey, I need to look out for our event," or whatever. The intent is not to say they don't have to be here, but it does make more sense just logistically if we can group like all of the parts together.
No, no. I was just, I was just kidding. I was just, I was just saying, I'm gonna put Wes at number one and number 17 so he has to sit here all night. I was, that was just a joke.
Yeah, there's nothing that, yeah. We did have that question. But if they're working, have to study, because they have to study.
But what we have on topic right now, there's nothing that would, that we have to change to do that.
Yeah, there's nothing that we're putting that now.
No, and, and.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. Yeah, that, that.
And I guess, yeah, so. And I guess what Jimmy's, and I'm, I'm kind of, it kind of sounds like everybody is of similar opinion in that it doesn't, it doesn't really feel like a big deal to anybody. I, I get the idea of doing the quicker things first, because you, because you get the formalities over with and let anybody who's there for that get out of here. But, I mean, Jack's right, in the past, when we knew we had either a long agenda or some, some, some issues that were gonna take a long time, and we had a group on the backend, we kind of took them out of order and let them get out of here.
You don't want to rush the important stuff, and if you get bogged down with a lot of resolutions and minutia, and then you get to an ordinance that we really need to spend time on, you know, the human nature is to say, "Man, look, we've been here all day. Let's just, let's just get through this." And that's what, that's not what you want to do.
I completely agree with that, too.
So, now, let's, let's, let's continue with what we, what we think we can, that is of substance to change as far as the unanimous consent, I think we should apply it to the change. That's the one thing that I do think should come into the change. And we don't have that right now in our ordinance.
And unanimous, you're, you're specifically discussing budget, budgetary items that have already been approved in the.
Yeah, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not gonna put the technical or the instrument together. But yes, and I can't remember, so, but unanimous consent was concerned, and, you know, we could call Lori on this, or you guys could figure it out, but when we group things, that there is no action to be taken on if I, if I, if I.
Similar, similar to what we did a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
And, yeah, and I, and I guess the.
Consent agenda item.
Yeah, it's a consent.
It's consent, yeah. Unanimous consent, yeah.
But, and I'm, I'm trying to think back through the way we did it a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago now, is, you know, it, it can't be done on every agenda, obviously, because there, because there may be budgetary items that were approved in the budget that things have changed now and need some discussion and whatnot. So you could always carve those out of that, just like we moved around and it was, you know, two through seven and 14 through 16 were consent.
Yeah, so, so for instance, speaking about the things that are pass-throughs, could we get the agenda when it's already been approved by the chief for liquor or this or that, or this person wants to donate, all those little small things that we're so concerned about, we could speed it up by consenting them if we all unanimously have that.
But I don't know that you need anything in the.
I'm just saying, this is.
I mean, we did it last time. I mean, I think you can do that by consent at any meeting, depending on what's on the agenda that you'd like to apply that to.
I think the city clerk needs that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would, it would be something that we'd have to look at based on each agenda each time on, on what, but there may be something every week that, you know, a half dozen or so things that, that we can do that with.
So you don't think, Councilman Robinson, that we need to put some type of language into order when we're gone, that others behind us coming, you know what I mean?
Well, no, no, because that's, that's, that's really a convenience item, I think, for the council that's, that's sitting there. I mean, I don't know that, because me doing six at one or 12 at one versus me taking an extra 30 minutes to do them piece by piece, I don't know that I want to bind anybody else to that, because they might not feel as comfortable with it.
Well, I'm not, speaking of a bind, just the opportunity.
Well, yeah.
It doesn't be a binding, because we might not all consent. So in a consent, everybody has to be unanimous.
Right.
So it is not a necessary give.
But what I'm saying is, I, I don't know that you have to put anything on paper to do that, because it, because it really applies differently to.
If you've already done that agenda, you tell the clerk, or you tell the other council members in the work session, "Hey, these are all real similar items. When we get to seven through 12, does anybody, does anybody have a problem if I ask for a motion to approve all of these by?"
That's right, okay.
Like suspend with the reading.
It's Robert's rules. I just didn't know if we wanted to put in, add it to our.
I just, well, here's.
We know it's Robert's rules, so we know we can do it. I just didn't know if we wanted to add it, you know, to, to our, to our deal, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, if you wanted to add something to say, you know, to give you the authority to do that, but I think you have that authority anyway.
You do, you do. It's just a conversation.
Kind of like your conversation with the historic preservation, is that if it's already allowed, why, why, why change it?
Yeah, that's kind of my thought.
But so you could have consent agenda items, let's, for example, if it, if items five through 15 were budget-related, anything that's, you know, above budget, that's automatically pulled out of there.
Yeah.
Like that has to be.
Well, and even, it could be a budgetary item, it could be a budgetary item that needs discussion, so you have to.
Yeah, you pull it out.
Pull that one out.
So you have to review them.
And I would say, somebody, and it might be one that doesn't necessarily have to have discussion, but if Councilman Burrell says, "I want to talk about item number 10," and Councilman Martin says, "I want to talk about item number 12,"
You just cherry pick those out, yeah.
Yes.
And I think you can do that each meeting, and obviously, you know, Cory, you know, as, as we move forward, you know, for the next year, you know, you can have that conversation with Lisa, you and Jack can have that conversation with Lisa, and, you know, as far as what we think that might be, and then as, and then we can have that discussion as a council and work session, and decide whether that's something we want to do.
You can have that discussion yourself with Lisa every other week, to be honest, yeah. You just kind of forecast what you think.
Yeah, yeah.
And Lisa, may I ask you, Mr. President, may I ask a question?
You may.
Lisa, when you get agenda items from the mayor's staff, do you almost always know who submitted that item so that you could group things together, or is that?
Normally I do.
Normally? So 95% of the time, you would know, so you could group? It may be the occasional that they're not quite grouped, or you'd have to ask or something?
I can do that.
Okay.
All right. So, so my thought is, I don't, I don't necessarily see a real reason to change the order of it. I think we can either take it, take those, take those issues up either from consent or with a consent agenda, or by just simply taking something out of order if it needs to be expedited and gotten over with.
Sounds good.
Any, any heartburn? I mean, any, any, anybody willing to die on that hill?
Nah.
All right. Perfect.
Who brought this up? I mean, if it ain't broke, why we try to fix something ain't broke?
Hey, we're just open discussion.
It's discussion, it's okay. Yeah, we can talk, it's okay.
Normally we discuss some problems or issues.
Well, you know.
I'm just trying to figure out what this was all about.
Evolution.
All right. Item, item number four is committee updates. Councilman Burrell.
Well, since this is the first meeting of the month, I don't have any committee updates, but I will say that there is an item on the agenda concerning some funding for the Airport Authority, and we do meet tomorrow night, so I hope that you will see that, that that was a win-win situation for the city and for the Airport Authority. And we can go through that, if we want to go through the agenda if you want. But we've put together some, some favorable terms for the city and some favorable terms for the airport. I think it's very fair, as fair to the citizens, fair to Airport Authority. We also have a recreation board meeting coming up on Wednesday, so no report there.
Councilman Martin?
I don't have, same thing. We're not quite having any meetings yet, so I don't have anything at this time.
Also, no, no committee updates at this time.
Kevin?
Hello?
All right, and, and we talked historic preservation. Obviously, outside of that, I don't have anything else, so I will move on to department head updates. So if you're here and you got something, come on up. We'll talk about your update and anything you have on the agenda.
Hey, I've got items 18 through 23.
See, that's in a group.
18, all right. All right, go ahead.
All right, so 18 is the selection evaluation team for Kimley Horn for the forced main sewer upgrades, as part of the prerequisite for the restore project.
Okay, council, any questions about number 18? All right, hearing none. Go right ahead.
All right, number 19 is Krebs to be awarded for the headworks, and I think Cory was there for that evaluation, for them to award that project for not to exceed fee.
Is that being reimbursed? Is that reimbursable?
You said 19?
19.
No, 19 is, it is reimbursable. I think 19, that's the gas. And I remember us getting money for the gas.
I think he's got a different agenda.
Yes, you got a different agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, 19 is gas, but it, to answer, I believe it is.
Yeah.
That's the one that was.
So the headworks, we're, the whole thing's not reimbursable. 1.5 million of it is reimbursable.
No, 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 he was talking about the gas.
Okay, okay. Yes, it is reimbursable. Yes, that one is, too.
I told Lori that this morning.
All right, so what number?
So where am I now?
So, so, was 18 your real 18 then?
No, no. Yes.
It was, it worked out, just so happened?
18 was 18.
Yeah, 18 was 18. That's what messed me up, because I thought he was on point.
Right.
Yeah, because 18 was Kimberly Manor.
So I've got, so 13, 13, that was, that was Krebs, or, no, that was.
13 is Krebs, I believe, right? Or is that Kimberly?
No, no, Kimberly Horn. That, so that's the one we just did.
Okay.
Okay.
18's also Kimberly Horn.
Yeah, number 16, procurement for the water extension on County Road 33 going south.
So he's got 13 and 14 as well. He's on 60 right now, but he has 14.
All right, yes, Darrell, it looks like you actually have 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Yeah.
So. You want an update on the brother?
I just got one. I just got one, Mr. Boone.
All right, so 13, so you got 13 through.
16 was the, the water upgrade on County Road 33, water, water line extension, procurement of those, of that, of that material.
You're on 16, sir?
Yeah.
What about 14 and 15?
We're on 16, all right, we'll go back. We're on sixteen, all right, we'll go back.
Yeah, we'll go back, we'll go back.
You want to go back to fourteen?
No, 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 stay where you are.
Stay on sixteen, stay on sixteen.
You have any questions on sixteen?
Yeah, so, th- that's just materials, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's going to be hydrants, that's going to be fittings, that's going to be elbows, that's going to be valves, everything we need. We, we procured the pipe a couple, couple months ago, so they're installing it right now.
This is all budgeted, right?
It's all budgeted.
Yeah.
All right, no more questions, go ahead, Daryl.
All right, well, you, you want to move up to fourteen?
Yeah, we'll go to fourteen.
All right, professional engineering services for the headworks, that's Krebs Engineering, not to exceed the fee schedule.
I got a question about that, if you don't mind, so, when we hire them, I mean, what did we ultimately agree on that they were going to be doing at that headworks?
So they were going to be adding redundancy to the head, the headworks.
Yep.
Um, they were going to use the same footprint, so we didn't have to relocate the headworks. Uh, and, and this, and the secondary clarifier, they were going to add, um, a, a, a new line for the gr- the, the grease on top to get wasted into the digester instead of just being recycled.
Okay.
And streamlining the entire influent process.
That pipe there?
Yes.
Elbow?
Yes, instead of coming in and going back and backing around and back into the or, to the orbital system and go straight into the headworks and then straight into the orbital. So we're, we're going to eliminate the choke.
What about the odor control?
Uh, we're going to send grease through the system, so that's going to eliminate a lot of the odors right there, that, that, that's the biggest problem.
We're not going to have the indoor right now, that's not part of the scope, thank you.
No, I was going to.
No.
And it's a phased approach.
Yeah.
And it could be added later, right?
Yes.
It's a phased approach, and, um.
Not that I'm not for odor control, I just don't know that that was the right way to go about it.
Well, anyway, we'll talk about it, go ahead, Daryl.
Okay, so, and, and more questions on the headworks?
Hey, Daryl, can I just clarify too? Under the, um, agenda, the description where it says grant, it says America Rescue Plan, ARPA, twenty-twenty-one, that's actually through A D M. Um, it's, so, I just want to make sure, that's the one point five that we received from the, from A D M for that grant also, so, I just want to clarify that.
What numbers are on there?
It's on the headworks project, the one we're just discussing.
All right, go ahead with fifteen.
Uh, number fifteen, um, we bu- we budgeted half a million dollars for water meters, three-quarter, one-inch and two-inch.
That's just a pass-through cost, right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right.
Seventeen? Okay.
That's the five hundred thousand.
Yep, all right, and then seventeen is to?
Um, so we've, uh, in our warehouse or in our building, uh, we have a big pile of water meters, copper, um, that we would like to disassemble, separate, and turn into the scrapyard to have it reloaded back into our budget.
Got no issue with that, council, any questions for Daryl on seventeen? All right, anything else?
Uh, eighteen, um, uh, the selection of Kimley Horn for engineering services for the lead line, lead service line inventory and compliance. That's something that came down those last couple years from, from the federal EPA, that, uh, the entire United, the entire United States is going to have to follow.
Council President, may I? Uh, there are one question on, um, the previous one as far as the property. Do you know how much we'll get, or you have an estimate of what we'll get on return?
I, I, I don't, I mean, it's, it's market value, uh, we can search around for the highest price.
Okay.
And sell it to them.
All right, council, any questions on number eighteen for Daryl? All right. Hear none?
Think that's, I think that's it.
All right.
Any more questions?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, just a couple of updates, um, probably the one that's in everybody's mind is the Gaston Plaza. Uh, we spent a little quality time there today, and it really is amazing, uh, the transformation from this morning to, uh, this afternoon. Some of the landscaping is being completed, and, uh, flowers are going in the ground, and, uh, yes, we will have lighting the tree and an open plaza come Thursday, or, uh, you may be hiring a whole bunch of new staff. So, uh, I think that's, uh, was the mayor's expectation there, so, and I'm, I just don't really, not ready for early retirement, so we're gonna, we're gonna get it done, and it is, it is looking good, it hasn't been without challenges, but it's exciting. If you hadn't been into the alley with the string lights lit at night, it's, uh, it's, I think, we're going to get it finished, and it's really going to be a really nice space, uh, for our community there. Uh, just kind of an update, and it has a sad note, as many of you know, um, engineer with Volker, Andy James, passed away, um, a weekend or so ago, and the kind of saddest part is, he's, he's our lead engineer on the roundabout at North Section Street, uh, or was our lead engineer, uh, and, you know, I, I had at least the pleasure of spending about four hours with him on the Thursday before his death with Aldot, going through the final review of that plan set. Uh, Volker has reached out to me and let me know that they're working on staffing and, and trying to get that reassigned, but, uh, keep the James family in your mind, and, and even though progress has to keep moving forward, we understand that sometimes you encounter difficulties that you just got to give a little time to, to work through, so, uh, but that project is really at a seminal point with, where we got all our comments back from Aldot, just really have to clean up the plans, and we should have authorization to, to move on that, uh, hopefully by the start of the, the new calendar year. Uh, the agenda items I had, and I've got my decoder ring, so I know which number to say now, um, because I'm a creature of habit, I print my agenda off, uh, first thing on the, on the Monday morning of, of council day. Item number ten, uh, is a request to approve the selection of Gresham Smith, um, uh, for professional engineering services for the Section Street resurfacing. Uh, just a little quick kind of information or background, one, the mayor, as well as council, has challenged us to try to, to share the, the wealth with as many engineering firms, this is a firm that we haven't used in, uh, in my tenure here. Um, but one of the things that, when we, we sat down and, and talked with engineering firms, as you know, you budgeted to resurface Section Street and the Central Business District, which will be basically from, from Bayou to Fells, which includes all the public parking along that stretch, um, is, one of the things that we wanted to do is, one, be timely on this, our goal is that this, hopefully, you will see the bid award on this probably the week, uh, the second council meeting in March, right before, um, Arts and Crafts Festival, so that we can have that contract go in effect as soon after Arts and Crafts Festival, with it being the work completed before July fourth, that's kind of the one period of time in the, in the life of the city, even though it's never not busy, but there's no scheduled events or any things like that. Uh, Gresham Smith was willing to, uh, work with us on this, and that is, as you know, we have our own in-house right-of-way in construction inspectors, and they're willing to allow our inspectors to do the C E and I on this. This will be night paving, uh, because of just the nature of downtown, and, uh, they will, they are, they will allow our inspectors to do the, the actual observation, collecting of tickets, and then, uh, work with them to prepare, uh, pay requests and things of that nature. And a lot of engineering firms wouldn't, really don't want to, you know, they want to get paid for that inspection, and they're willing to let us use our staff to keep that cost down, and we're hoping when you see the, that contract amount, probably going to be less than about eight percent of the total project, front and back, uh, so we're just trying to be conscientious and, and time consider it there. Item number eleven is the selection of, of watershed for professional architectural service.
Richard, I have one question on that resurfacing.
Go ahead.
If I may, um, the ADA stuff, are we taking care of the ADA? Because I saw in the scope that that's extra, are we paying them to do it, or are we going to do the ADA?
The, the requirement of ADA is that when we're doing an improvement, and now they even consider resurfacing improvement, we have to bring any associated areas up to ADA complacency. The good news is, we've kind of concentrated on Section Street over the last few years, and as far as, as we know, between Bayou and Fells, all ADA compliant issues should have already been addressed. So hopefully, if we do encounter it, we'll take care of that ourselves, but we think we've got that knocked out, because you know, we've done work, uh, here close by on Section Street at, uh, at Pine, we've done, we're currently finishing up two ramps at the Clock Corner, our Gaston Plaza right now, we did improvements at Delamar, uh, a while back, so we punched out those ADA challenges that we had in our plan, so we don't expect that, but yes, if, if that doesn't include them doing any ADA design, correct.
Okay, got you.
Um, item number, uh, eleven is the selection of watershed for, uh, professional architecture services. This is for the Nature Center, that hopefully what will be known as Flying Creek Nature Preserve. Um, and, uh, again, we, even though Rebecca and her team have been subconsultants, this, she was, she was not in our system, so this will be the first time she'll be a lead architect, but she's very familiar with the, with the overall project, and I think will do a wonderful job in, uh, redeveloping the existing homestead there into a nature center, uh, for the, uh, the, uh, Nature Preserve. Item number twelve, um, and as you know, this has been a process that's gone along for, uh, a better part of, uh, now, one on five, five-plus years, uh, we did open the bids to the Working Waterfront after the second round of advertising. We only had one responsive bidder, uh, I will just tell you, the bid was extremely, uh, out of line in what the engineer's estimate was, and we are asking you to reject that bid and at least allow us a good faith effort to go in and negotiate, to see if, uh, those costs can be brought into the line of industry standards. Regardless of what the outcome is, it will come back to you for some consideration, whether it's to reject in, in total and move on, and at that time, we will be able to kind of present, if, if there's no path forward in the current, uh, path that we're in, is what our options are going forward from that point, but really, the, uh, all we're asking today is a reject and authorize staff and the, uh, design team to sit down with the responsive bidder and see if there can be some, uh, honest, uh, reevaluation of some of those unit costs to come back to you to something that's more in the realm of feasible, financial feasibility.
And this is for the parking lot?
This is the Working Waterfront project, this is the, this is the fountain, the parking, the seawall, the pier rehab, the new bathroom, the rehab of the existing bathroom on the piers, the, it's the whole, whole project, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I was clear on that.
And then, uh, I will offer, uh, a commentary, a thank you on item twenty-four. You don't realize how hard it is to manage projects with names that are not established? Um, you know, right now, we have Gomaesa grants going on out there, we have urban forestry going on out, and, and, and what do we call where they're working in the project, so we're, I'm a big supporter of getting official name for things, because all of a sudden, the nomenclature becomes consistent throughout the ba- uh, throughout the process, and I will also challenge and ask you maybe to look at the K-one center and think about where you want to go with naming there, because, you know, we've already had it as best as contract, we've got two architectural contracts right now, and it's like, it's just, every, every invoice you have, it just has a veri- a derivative of K-one center in the name, so, uh, names are good things in our world to be able to assign them to the project, and so everybody's using the same terminology, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Richard.
Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, I have agenda item number nineteen, uh, it's pretty straightforward, it's award the bid for the, uh, thirty-one gas line relocation. We've talked about this, uh, at length before, it'll be awarded to Equix Energy. Uh, they were the lowest bidder at five hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, that's a hundred percent reimbursable through the state.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Anybody else?
Last week, um, we had a meeting with, um, P F M, our financial advisor, that met with a couple of council members and gone over, you know, actually, they were getting direction, and I think our next step, um, we're going to be looking at our rates, and so we'll have some other follow-up meetings, so if any of y'all who missed any meetings, we'll still have some other follow-up meetings. Um, I have a couple of items, um, to start with. Um, number twenty, it's going to be a software license, um, this will be for us to sign a three-year, um, on our license, and we'd get a better rate versus I've been doing a year-to-year license, but this is the report writer that we use for doing the budget reports and our financial reports and a lot of our analysis. Um, do you have any questions on, um, those license? And then, um, number twenty-two, this is the, um, reimbursement resolution for, um, when we go to borrow, um, any funds, um, this resolution will state that we can go back and reimburse ourselves, um, with any loan proceeds. Have any questions on that, we discussed that in our last work session, or, or last meeting. And, um, twenty. Twenty-one would be authorized then to be part of a, um, South Alabama Purchasing Association to be, as a participant, and it'd be actually like a buying group.
Council, any questions for Kim on twenty-three through twenty-two? All right, I hear none.
I don't know that everybody has met Hannah Noonan, Hannah is our new H R director. She comes with a wealth of experience from another local municipality, um, she's been here for a month now? Six, six weeks, okay, so time flies when you're having fun, so about six weeks, so, so glad to have Hannah and the things she's doing in H R, she's a great addition to the team and going to do great things for the employees here, but she has a couple items on the agenda tonight.
Welcome.
I'm going to, um, I don't want to put this all off on Hannah, I'm talking about the uniforms, our, um, I know that before we had looked at uniforms and had done a lease agreement with Centos, that lease, um, or the rental program on uniforms is coming to an end. We have had several issues that are outlined in your, um, in your, in your packet, um, really, we have a lot of employees who are not wearing the uniforms because they just, they, we can't get them slow, um, to get replacements, we can't get them for new employees, they, they don't like the fit of them, so there's a lot of issues that we've had, and again, that's all outlined in your agenda packet, but you'll also, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Good evening, can y'all hear me? Um, okay, so it appears I also have, um, items eight and nine on the agenda, so, um, item eight is a resolution to approve the procurement of NeoGov, it is an online applicant tracking system. Uh, the request is to transfer an amount into, um, the Human Resources Budget in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Um, NeoGov will just offer us more exposure for, um, our current job postings, it'll offer easier, um, access and use for our applicants, which is a complaint that we get currently, that the system's not quite easy to use, it'll also offer easier access for our department and our hiring managers in regards to accessing and trapp- tracking their applications through the, um, recruitment lifecycle.
Is that a recurring cost, or is that an annual cost?
That's the, so, that's the fee for year one, which includes implementation, it's a three-year contract, it goes up incrementally into year two and year three, I don't remember the numbers, it's not a lot, it doesn't exceed, I think by year three, I think we're still under seventeen or eighteen thousand per year.
But the first year, I thought you said included implementation.
Yes, so that thirteen-six includes implementation and the year one subscription to the site.
But it doesn't go down, it still goes to year two or three?
That's correct, you get a significant discount from the company by signing on year one, but then year two and three and so on, they start to go up. Item nine is, uh, authorizing and approving the hiring of a new purchasing agent to allow the current purchasing agent, uh, who's retiring at the end of December, to work with and train the new employee. Um, this is a temporary position, so it will, um, expire upon retirement of the current purchasing agent.
Okay, council, any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the, uh, mayor, you talked about twenty-three, the, the work pants allowance, um, and so, obviously, looking at the resolution, instead of ordering uniform pants, we're just going to make it a, a uniform allowance for each employee?
Correct, we will, um, we will give them an allowance for pants, and then we will purchase the shirts.
Okay. All right, and that, I think, gets everything other than some of these, uh, appointments and, and, and simple things for donations and whatnot. Jack, do you want to go ahead and talk about twenty-five?
I'll try, my computer is, uh, has been dying, and I'm, I, I think I can probably.
You want to?
From memory.
Look, you want to say it here?
I think I can, I think I can go from memory on those terms.
I have it.
But I will say, uh, I'll, I'll preface this by saying that, uh, Marcus was fundamental in writing a resolution for the city, and, uh, Marcus, I'll have you know that I did have Josh look at it from, as the Airport Authority's attorney, to make sure, he was, he was very happy with the, uh, with the language that you had written in the resolution. So, we won't be, you know, we're not approving the agreement, we're authorizing the mayor to, to execute an agreement, so that this would just outline the terms, so they would be writing up the agreement, the agreement here over the next, maybe, I'd say, five to seven days, we, we should have something written, but it, but all the key terms are, are included. Uh, Josh did say, and I don't have that pulled up, it says, an amount, uh, if you can scroll up, uh, it, we, I think it says six hundred thousand, it should say.
Yeah, six hundred.
An amount not to exceed six hundred. Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you.
There it is.
So it should say, general framework loan, and it says general framework, so it's generic in nature, uh, of the loan funding agreement shall not exceed, it should say, probably, it says that shall be, shall not exceed six hundred thousand, because it may be, it may be less. I believe that the interest rate that, uh, they were being given was about five point six percent, uh, through bank financing, and the banks wanted the city a fair hope, or would not loan them the money without us guaranteeing the loan. I believe that the interest rate that they were being given was about 5.6% through bank financing, and the banks wanted the city of Fairhope, or would not loan them the money without us guaranteeing the loan. So, perhaps the idea, well, why don't we loan them the money, we're on the hook part anyway, which we would be through the bank financing. We can loan them the money at the rate at which we're receiving interest on our deposits. Kim, I believe we're getting 4.76, you may have told me?
4.75.
It is 4.75, okay, but this, and this would be at 4.75, so no cost, no lost revenues to the, to the citizens of Fairhope. They, their bank loan would have been interest-only for 18 months, and so we made this interest-only for 18 months, and the principal balance being paid off within 10 years. So, they would have nine annual installments beginning the month after their interest-only payments ended. So, it would start at 4.75. If our savings rate goes up, their, their rate of borrowing would go up, but never exceed 5.5. Could happen, it could go that we, we receive more than 5.5, but I think that we're probably seeing rising rates, we probably, it's coming to an end, so. On the, on the flip side, if our rate goes down, earnings on deposits go down, their rate will go down, but only half that which our rate went down. So, the city will make a little bit of margin on there, it'll help the airport authority, it'll help the city. But we don't want to gouge them, so if the, if there's a delta of, say, 2% between what we're earning and what they owe, we set the max delta at 0.75%. So, if we're running 2%, they would pay no more than 2.75%. So, I think we can justify it. And the bottom line is, if they had a problem paying us back, they're going to have a problem paying the bank back, and we would be on the hook for that. But a lot of good things are happening with the airport authority. Their earnings are going to go up considerably in the fall of 2024, which is going to give us great confidence that they can, that they can repay us. And, and not only that, once we get to the end of our funding resolution, you know, we can start in earnest weaning them off of, of the city by reducing that $320,000 appropriation that we give them by, I'm just going, don't hold me to this, 25, 30,000 a year until, until it's, it's zero. As they increase the amount that they receive from ground leases and other revenue sources, that are going to come about in the fall of 2024. We, we should start to be able to wean them off. This saves the airport authority also a lot of money in finance, in, in just.
Fees.
Fees and such associated with the loan, and what they would probably would have done was in, say, four, five years, if rates were to go down, they would refinance that once again. They don't have to do that, it's, it's saved them potentially tens of thousands of dollars. So, anything that we save them, we're saving ourselves, right? Because we're on the hook for them pretty much.
All right. Think we have covered all the agenda items.
Counsel President?
Yep.
I was just informed today that on number 26, that's $500 for each bike rack, which makes it $1,000 donation.
All right, done. All right, so, I will.
Got a quick question.
Yep.
Just a simple question, so I don't have to ask it later. 27 for the Girl Scout cookies, it says across the street from the library.
Yeah, that, that courtyard, that courtyard right there. All right, guys, I will conclude the work session, we'll come back at 6, get started.